Council is back in session. The public hearing will resume. At this time, we will hear from anybody who is in support of the Commissioner's resolution, and we'll start with those that are in the room. Anybody in support of the Commissioner's resolution?
Apparently it's us. Yeah.
Hey Carl, you will get a chance to rebut, so you may want to wait. As petitioner, you get a final say, so...
I didn't see anybody getting up to speak in support.
Derek, are you going to speak?
We're going to speak.
Okay, so let me just clear then. Anybody in the room who wants to speak in opposition, I'm sorry, in support of the Commissioner's resolution? You want to, have you spoken yet tonight?
No.
Name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Joseph Varga. I live at 1202 East Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. I'm a lifelong resident of South Bend and have been familiar with Portage Manor for many years. I think clearly it's been an asset to our community for many, many years. And I just want to thank the council, actually. I want to thank all of you, Democrats and Republicans, and I guess I'll go a little bit against what I've heard earlier. I thank the new council members, and I thank the Commissioners. I thank you for bringing this to light, and for us having a conversation about it, for the community to be able to hear about it, to be able to discuss different alternatives, and I've heard some good ones. I guess my question is, where has the county council been the last 20, 30 years? Where have you been? Where has the ongoing maintenance been for Portage Manor? Now all of a sudden, I see a change in the council, and all of a sudden, I see people who want to help people. So I guess I am happy that they want to help people, okay? And they're going to try to find a great facility for these people as opposed to a fire trap, because none of us would want a tragedy there. None of us would want that. So kudos to the Commissioners. Thank you Commissioners. Kudos to the county council, as it is now, for addressing this. It's a tough decision. There's a lot of good people who care on both sides. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room that would like to speak in support of the Commissioner's resolution?
Hello, I'm Rhonda Richards, 1020 Clover Street, South Bend, Indiana. I also want to thank you. I believe this...
I know, but I'm saying when I get to like her age, I want to be doing...
I believe the county has been lax in taking care of this for a long time, and I believe it is a jewel. I believe it is a needed asset to our community. I also know that this would be a very hard decision on any side. I work in mental, I work in the health profession. I have friends that have mental illness. This is not fun. This is not easy. There is, this started way back several Presidents ago when I was very young, when they disbanded a lot of the mental institutions and things. And that problem started then. That wasn't any of us, but we are living in it, and I applaud you for taking the steps. I have, it's exciting to hear that people are interested in possibly helping or doing something with this, or partnering with you to do this, but I have some concerns. I don't know a lot about building, but to have a major business plan done in a four-month period seems awful steep climb, from what I know. And I also did not hear anybody talk about the fact that with a building that old, there is possibly asbestos and other things besides the bad pipes. So that would make keeping the residents there during the renovation a harder task. I'm not saying, I don't know that it would, wouldn't be possible, but it seems like at my novel level, that would be a harder task. So I thank you for considering this. I thank you for the conversation, but there are other issues that I'm not sure have come out in the newspaper, or even in other people's comments tonight, that maybe need to be considered.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the Commissioner's resolution? Seeing no one in the room, is there anyone online who wants to speak in favor of the Stephen, do you want to speak, or?
Yes. I'd like to address the council members and President Stephen Whitmer, 5600 Block of Eastview Drive, Oceola, Indiana. I have a son with autism, and it's a daily struggle day to day. Why anyone, and I have heard numerous families say that their family member is at Portage Care, why they would put their family member out of their home and into a facility is beyond me. Yes, it's a struggle day to day with someone with handicaps, but who other than family are best to take care of their own? I would not place my son in there, even if I was looking for a facility. It's unsprinkled. To even consider moving residents into a wing, condensing their population into a small portion of the building while renovations were going on, to me seems like a tragedy waiting to happen. Every hour that this is delayed would be risking lives that so many seem to be so concerned about. For 20 and 30 years, the council has kicked this can down the road. Why not? Why do so many oppose closing this down? It's unsafe, and structurally, it's challenged. Plumbing, electrical, it just doesn't seem to me to be a good move to try to save this.
Thank you. Anybody else online wish to speak in favor of the resolution?
Mr. President, I have a quick question.
No.
Can I ask you a question real quick? I wanted to ask Mr. Dalton a couple of questions. Would now be time, or no?
Those really need to be during the council discussion time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anybody else online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed on Resolution Number 3823. The petitioner has five minutes to rebut anything said tonight.
Well, thank you. What a conversation. At work, we just had a seminar in crucial conversations. How do you have them? And you have them by having an open dialogue, but talking about the things that you do agree on. And there are several points that we heard tonight very eloquently that we do care about and do agree on, and that is the care of the residents. Nobody is questioning the care of the residents. Second, nobody is caring, is arguing about the professionalism of the caregivers. What we're talking about is the facility itself. This is a substandard facility. We heard that from several people. They might not have said it as loudly, but you heard it over and over, that this building has lacked maintenance for years. There was a study done several years ago that looked at the cost of renovation. Coming out of that, because the cost was high, a study was done to build a new facility roughly the same size. That was deemed very expensive, and the Commissioners were asked to look at an alternative. Another study was done to look at a smaller facility, and as I said in the opening remarks, none of those were deemed economically viable. So what we're left with is a facility that is in desperate need of renovation to provide a quality of life for the residents that they deserve. I just want to point out one thing, and I appreciate Councilman Morton bringing it up. If I misspoke in talking about Dr. Ayella, and I didn't mean to disrespect her, I didn't see her in the room, and I didn't want to use her name unless she was here, but during the meeting that we had with her, she was specifically asked, if the county goes ahead and decommissions, closes the facility, does that mean your proposal is off the table, that you would not proceed? That's all that was asked. We wanted to make sure that if the council were to go ahead with supporting the Commissioner's recommendation, that that wasn't closing the door on that. We've kind of heard that from Todd Ziegler a few weeks ago. So that was the question that was asked. Secondly, one thing that I do want to take exception to, and I think all of us as elected officials ought to take exception to, is that there is some sort of a quid pro quo with development of the property. Magnus Capital has brought forth to the city a proposal for workforce development. They showed to the county a preliminary plan. It in no way included Portage Manor. They were specifically asked, what about Portage Manor? That's not part of their plan. They came back a little later with a much more condensed plan. That's a separate issue. That's something that the city is pursuing. Finally, you heard it from Deb Lambert, you heard it from Derek and I at our Commissioner meetings, you heard it from Courtney. The facility cannot be closed unless every resident is afforded an option for alternative housing. So the suggestion that residents are going to be kicked out on the street homeless is simply misinformation. That is not going to happen. Having said all that, Derek?
Do I get five minutes, or is that his five?
No, nope. How much time?
Forty seconds.
We got 30 seconds left?
That's correct.
Can I speak after him?
Well, if really held to that, we would like to make a...
Derek, go ahead. We'll give you three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Carl. Thanks for everybody that came to speak. This is how the system works when we, Carl and I voted two to one for this. I think there were only six people at that meeting. I don't know if you were there. I know Mr. McManus, Connery, so on the seventh floor, there were six people. Again, this is an issue that's very important to the community, and this is how the system works. We make a vote, then it comes for these people to make a vote on what we voted on. So that's why everybody's here, that's why the public can come out and talk. A lot of misinformation, and Mr. Caruso, I'm disappointed in you, because you said about right there, when I called Mr. Celio a liar, correct, on the property that he wanted to put with Mangus out there. Remember that? Okay. So don't say that we were trying to do that, because it was not. Secondly, or thirdly, I'm talking. So at the end of the day, this is very important to everybody, very important to hear. A lot of people have a lot of concerns. So one question would be, who's more vulnerable, the people at the Knights Inn, or the people at Portage Manor? Y'all can think about that, because if you're going to go a line of demarcation, who's more vulnerable?
Everybody.
Because you all gave...
They're all vulnerable, Derek.
Okay, but listen, this is my time, not yours, okay? So the moral of the story is, you gave $4 million to the people on Lincoln Way. But Carl and I have talked about this. There's a lot of ideas. Several people said that they will take the lead, so hopefully some of the people on the council will take the lead to formulate a plan. So Carl and I are going to ask the council to give a 60-day window, to delay your vote for 60 days, so everybody that wants to have a plan can go get a plan, they can get together with a doctor and whoever else to come up with a plan, and come back to you guys in 60 days. So we're asking you guys to take a 60-day extension before you vote.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Hold on, hold on. Can I ask you a question, sir?
Ask the President.
Go ahead.
Okay, what'd you just say? What'd you say, repeat that again? You're asking the council to do what?
I'm asking the council to take a 60 days before you vote on this. And for whoever wants to do a plan, come back with a plan. We had half a dozen people, if not more, said they can do something, so come back in 60 days with a plan.
So you're saying we should delay our vote tonight?
That's what I just said.
Okay, I think I'm going to faint. That's what I'm saying.
Go ahead.
And you and I have been friends for 35 years, and I hope, you're a very strong guy, I hope you catch it.
Forty-two.
I think I'm going to faint.
You faint in front of me, I get you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien.
Right, right. So procedurally, if the council's inclined to go along with Mr. Dieter's request...
And Mr. Baxmeyer.
And Mr. Baxmeyer's request, I think the proper procedure would be for the pending motion to be withdrawn, and then a motion to table for 60 days, assuming it was seconded and passed, then would come back on the agenda in the May, whatever the second Tuesday in May would be.
Motion to table.
If, I don't have a vote, I'm just saying if that's, if the council's inclined to go along with it, that would be the process.
Thank you. And with that said, I will entertain a motion on Resolution Number 38-23. Is there a motion? Ms. Drake. Chair recognizes Ms. Drake.
Motion to table for 60 days.
Second.
We have a motion to table this bill for 60 days, made by Ms. Drake and seconded by Mr. Thomas. Is there any further council discussion on the resolution? Ms. Drake.
I've been coming to county council meetings for almost three years, and I've sat out there in the public, too. And through those last three years, Portage Manor has been a topic continuously, and I've seen Mike Mish bring different proposals forward, and obviously, it was a very difficult problem to solve. And I'm glad it's out now. I don't think it's necessarily rushed, because it's been there, but it was important to finally come out and be brought up so that we could discuss it. I know Portage Manor serves a very important population. Joe and I have both been out there. You know, we wanted to do something, and we didn't know exactly what to do. So I think, you know, if in 60 days, we have a financially backed plan that allows the county to exit from its arrangement with Portage Manor, I would be okay with that plan. But if in 60 days, we don't have a reliable plan, I would like to continue forwarding, moving forward on our plan to work with a company to find residents the best homes that they can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comment on this bill?
Would it be okay to ask?
Yes, now's the time, Mr. Shetzel.
Mr. Dalton, I just wanted to ask you a couple of quick questions to clarify, because there were some comments that I think are false. What is your expertise, Mr. Dalton?
Good evening. Steve Dalton, financial advisor to the county.
What is your expertise, sir?
Finances, anything related to municipal finance, fund accounting.
How long have you been researching the Portage Manor issue?
I began working with the county in 2015, and Andy Castellini and I had our first conversation about Portage Manor in 2015, and I recommended at that time, that as soon as possible, the county get out of the county home business.
Okay, and what was your reason for giving that advice?
We were already at that time beginning to show some reduction in revenues and increases in expenses, and we could see that the lines were going to cross quickly. At that time, there was $2 million in reserves that had been built up over many years, and I could see that it was going to start to drop, and soon we'd be subsidizing as a county.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. I wanted just to add to that. You know, I also visited Portage Manor twice recently. I had never been there. I assume everyone on the council has been there. I'm a former hospital administrator, so I walked into Portage Manor with the intention of evaluating the care given and the safety of the facility. At our last meeting, I stated that we don't take care of residents as we should. I was referencing mainly to the structural deficiencies I had heard of, not the care given by the staff. Based on what I saw and heard, the staff does a great job. And I'm sure if I was still administrator, administrator, I'd try to steal some of them away from you. But the reality is that we are leaving people in harm's way when they're in Portage Manor. How many of you would put a loved one in a residential care facility, hospital, or other healthcare facility that had a sign on the front door, "We have no fire suppression system, nor do we have bedside call buttons for your loved one to use in case of emergency"? That's what I thought. Yeah. Well, I can tell you this right now. You shouldn't do it. Okay? I think we all know what the honest answer is. Portage Manor has no fire suppression system. Nor does it have a bedside call button. Nor do they have bedside call buttons.
Public outbursts will not be tolerated any longer. Please, this is council discussion time. You had your chance, you all had a chance to speak. Please, honor the decorum of the meeting.
Thank you.
It's the last time I'm going to say it, or we will ask security to remove you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Shetzel, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. This includes rooms with four residents, each of which have mental health issues. There are other problems, such as ceilings falling in, outside walls falling apart, there are violations of state codes for a residential care facility. I do wonder what has been going on for the last 20 or 30 years, Commissioners and council We have alternatives for Portage Manor residents. The Commissioners have hired Byron Medical Services to help us place those residents in new locations. We heard how dedicated the lady from Byron is. I am willing to go ahead, however, and go along with the 60 days with the idea that at the end of the 60 days, if there is not a viable, and I mean, by viable, I mean a financially stable, all the regulations matched, plan in place, that we would move forward with using Byron to relocate these residents in safer places.
Thank you. Any other council member wish to speak? Mr. Fig?
I have a question for Mr. Dalton, or actually for our auditor. It was mentioned tonight about, on our levy, we have $4 million that goes to mental health. What is the exact amount, or?
I can talk to it. Either way, you can also, if you'd like to talk about it. It's within the general fund, it's part of the general fund levy. It's like a subset of that. It goes to, primarily to Oak Lawn, with a portion going to Beacon. A little bit of money goes to the jail for psychotropic drugs. So it's kind of like, it's like a fund within a fund.
And Mr. Auditor, how much is that?
It's like $5 million, something like that.
Five million?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
It's part of, it's Location 40, it's kind of right in there, it's called Malhale, that account, yep.
Thank you, thank you.
There's an agreement that that's how it's distributed. We've had for a number of years.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from council members? Mr. Katandre.
Thank you, Mr. Root. We were told tonight, at the beginning of the presentation from the petitioner, that Portage Manor is not economically viable, and I would tend to disagree. If the R cap rate is increased, which our legislature is currently considering, they could nearly be self-sustaining again, like they were a few years ago. So I would disagree with that. I'm appreciative of the 60-day moratorium on this vote, because I think all of us putting our heads together, we can come up with some viable solutions in the next 60 days. I did get an email from Todd Zeiger. He wanted to be here tonight. He was at another meeting, but he did state in his email, wanted to include that in the public record. He said he's glad to work with the physician who is considering taking on Portage Manor. He said if it would be helpful, historic landmarks could be a pass-through from the county to a private developer, that physician or anybody else, for that matter. You know, we had a lot of good dialogue tonight, and this is exactly, going back to what Ms. Richards and Mr. Vargas said at the beginning, at the end of the meeting tonight, you know, that this has been a great conversation. This is what we wanted all along, was a good conversation like this, and we weren't really afforded that opportunity. Commissioners of past haven't come to us and said, "It's do or die. This has to be done for Portage Manor." I've been on the council a long time. Portage Manor has been pretty self-sustaining with their revenue sources in the past. It wasn't until recently, when we changed their budget, we made them show their health insurance costs, that they started to show a deficit that was more significant. So if the R cap rate would go up in this year's legislature, I would say lobby your state representatives and your state senators, and tell them that you think the R cap rate's important, and it hasn't been changed for over 10 years in Indiana. I would recommend everybody do that. We got good news about a month ago from our county treasurer, Tim Swager. The investments the county makes, when we budgeted last year, we anticipated our investments would earn the county $1.8 million in revenue. He came back to us about a month ago and said, "They're doing a lot better than we expected. Our revenue this year should be closer to $8 million, so we're going to have an excess of $6 million in revenue that we weren't planning on, which could help fund some of these issues, or to fund Portage Manor until we find an appropriate plan." So we've had some good news. There's a brand-new president at Portage Manor, John Butler. He's in the room, he's in the back of the room. John is going over paperwork that he just received as becoming the new president of the Board of Trustees. They haven't had a statutorily required meeting in almost three months. John says he's planning on having a meeting in March. John, you're...
The 21st.
He's planning on having a meeting the 21st of March with the board. We need to hear from the Portage Manager, Portage Manor Board. We haven't heard from them. Let's hear their way in on what the fate of Portage Manor should be, and what their ideas might be. They may have some ideas. Township trustees, we heard from one township trustee tonight, there are other township trustees. They're another funding source we haven't really considered. When Portage Manager was formed, prior to the 1906 building, the old county home was located where Potawatomi Zoo is. It was located there because it was closest to Portage Township and Penn Township, where the two townships where the most indigent people in our county lived that utilized Portage Manor. So why don't we approach the township trustees? They aren't obligated to provide any money for Portage Manor, but we did hear from one trustee tonight, who said he would entertain that as an idea. We heard from Matt Costel, Ann Loxon, from Logan and St. Vincent de Paul. I mean, those are stakeholders. We have not yet engaged stakeholders in this conversation. So somebody talking about the complexity of the residents of Portage Manor, they are very complex. They're very special. A lot of us have been out there, and they deserve our detailed attention. I don't think any one of us up here want to devastate the familial connection that everybody has to Portage Manor. It was said from Mark, the one resident, you know, "Keep our family together." And I think that's what we want to do. I would disagree about some comments about the deplorable condition of the building. It has good bones. It's a strong, solid old building. It has a state-of-the-art fire detection system in the building. It has a Simplex 4100 ES system in there. It's a nearly brand-new fire detection system. I have been to fires at Portage Manor. The building is built in such a way that the fires are contained within one room, and they don't get out of hand. So I do advocate for fire sprinklers, don't get me wrong. So whoever takes this project on in the future, it probably does need fire sprinklers, but it does have a good detection system, a good alarm system, and it's built in such a way, in the old style of construction, that it withstands and can contain a fire within a room, and that doesn't spread easily or rapidly. So I would disagree that it's falling apart. Yeah, there are some loose bricks on the back end of the building, on a part that was added on to the building after the original structure, but it has good bones, and I think it's definitely, the building is worth salvaging, it's worth investing in, and I applaud Dr. Atal, or anybody else who wants to consider taking this on as a project, and I, for one, on the council, committed to working with whoever that person or persons might be, and trying to get it into their hands, so we can get out of the business of being a healthcare provider like we do with health and hospital. That's all I have to say, Mr. Root.
Thank you, Mr. Katandre. Any other council member wish to comment on the resolution? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Council members.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katandre?
Just to clarify, this is yes to delay for 60 days?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes by, vote is nine-zero.
But the records show that Resolution Number 38-23 is held for 60 days. That concludes resolutions. Next up are salary amendments. Clerk, will you... That concludes resolutions. Next up are salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
Bill, Bill Number 2523, An Ordnance Amending Ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner Assessor?
May I have a committee report on Bill 2523?
Sorry. 2523 comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, council. I know it's been a long night. Michael Castlawn, St. Joseph County Assessor, with offices located on the third floor of this building. As presented to the committee, we are asking for a neutral adjustment, or a budget-neutral adjustment, eliminating two positions, or two part-time positions, so that we could fix and correct pay for our managerial positions. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We will move to public hearing on Bill 25-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Hearing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed on Bill 2523. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion that was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilman Morton. Are there any further council discussions on Bill 2523? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Oh, do you leave?
I apologize. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 2523 was passed by a vote of 8-0. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill Number 26-23, An Ordnance Amending Salary Ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner Assessor?
May I have a committee report, please?
26-23 comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Again, this is a bill that comes to you. It's budget-neutral. It eliminates a part-time position from the general fund, allowing us to adjust and fix pay for additional personnel.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner from the council? Hearing none. We'll move to public hearing on Bill 2623. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, I would entertain a motion on Bill 2623.
Move for passage.
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Morton. It was seconded by Mr. Shetzel. Any further council discussion on this bill? Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Mr. Murphy?
Oh, Mr. Root. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yes.
My score sheet's got a little mixed up there, but it's okay.
Thank you.
So it passes 8-0.
Let the record show that Bill Number 2623 was passed by a vote of 8-0. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill 26, 27-23, An Ordnance Amending Ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner Assessor?
Committee report, please?
2723 comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Again, this is the same as the two previous bills. This eliminates part-time position from the county cumulative reassessment fund, allowing us to fix pay for the managerial positions held within that budget.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none. We'll open to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion on 2723?
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Morton. It was seconded by Councilman Fig to pass this bill. Is there any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 2723 was passed by a vote of 8-0. Clerk, will you read the next bill?
Thank you.
Bill Number 35-23, An Ordnance Amending Ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner Auditor?
Do a committee report, please?
Bill 3523 comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
John Murphy, St. Joseph County Auditor. I have with me Kathy Gregorich, who's the office manager and the property tax settlement administrator. What we have is a vacancy in our office of one position on the property tax side. Now, what Kathy and others have talked about is, the others are going to pick up the duties that were left by that individual, and so we're going to share some of the salaries to that amount. These are generally the lower-paid employees in the office. It doesn't include the auditor or deputy auditor or finance director. It's really the property tax side that will benefit from this. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open to public hearing on Bill 3523. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion on 3523?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Morton. Any further council discussion on 3523? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
And Mr. Root?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 3523 was passed by a vote of 8-0. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill Number 36-23, An Ordnance Amending Ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner Clerk?
Thank you. Committee report, please?
Bill 3623 comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Hello, Mike Mesh, County Attorney. I have our clerk here. At the request of the clerk, we had taken a look at, are we talking about the attorney position here? Okay. Rafael's looking at me like I'm crazy. We had taken a look at adding an additional attorney position, someone to oversee the election board, and then give service to the clerk's office specifically. That's what we're here on. Happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner?
Mr. Root?
Yes, Mr. Katanzright?
Is that amount not to exceed the amount that's listed here, or is that a, no additional cost?
The 16, 660?
16, 066.
Yes. So that's what the baseline county attorneys get paid. They do get health insurance.
Okay.
There is no perf.
No perf?
No perf. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions from the council? Hearing none. We'll open to public hearing on Bill Number 36-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion on 3623?
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion was made to approve by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Is there any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Let the record show that Bill Number 3623 was passed by a vote of 8-0. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill Number 30-23, An Ordnance Amending Ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner Prosecutor?
Committee report, please?
3023 comes with a...
Wait, wait, wait. This is Mrs. Drake's committee.
I'm so sorry.
Bill 3023 comes to the floor with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Honitor, Prosecutor, 10th floor, County City Building. Counsel, I am asking for authorization to utilize the prosecutor's drug forfeiture fund for the purpose of hiring a legal secretary for expungement purposes. The total amount would be $60,483, with wages of $35,493. This is budget-neutral, because the cost would come out of the drug forfeiture fund. I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion on Bill 30-23?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Morton. Is there any further comment on this bill by the council? Seeing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root? President Root?
That was last year, sir.
It's getting late, isn't it, John?
It was six years under Morton. I'm sorry, Mark.
I got demoted, brother.
You're both good-looking. I couldn't...
Yes.
Okay.
Had a flashback there.
Sorry.
Let the record show that Bill Number 30-23 was passed by a vote of 8-0. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
I'll try. Bill Number 31-23, An Ordnance Amending Ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner Sheriff?
Committee report, please? Ms. Drake?
Bill Number 3123 comes to the floor with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Steve Noonan, Executive Officer for the St. Joe County Police Department, Office 401 West Sample Street. This represents the final year of a multi-year grant, and in this, we proposed having a summer intern at the cost of $2,746. There was somewhat of a surplus of money from this grant this year due to, during its inception, the pandemic hit, so it was, slowed the progress down in previous years. Be happy to answer any other further questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Hearing none. We'll open this bill up to public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Hearing none. May I have a motion on Bill 3123?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Morton. Is there any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Let the record show that Bill Number 31-23 was passed by a vote of 8-0. Clerk, will you read our next bill?
Bill Number 24-23, An Ordnance Appropriating and Transferring Money for the purposes herein specified for the several departments herein listed of St. Joseph County Government.
Thank you. All budget matters were discussed at our February committee meeting, and at that time, we had a discussion on them. So at this point, we will move to a public hearing on Bill Number 24-23. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to any item in Bill 24-23? Yes. Okay. We will get there when it's time for motions. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of Bill 24, I'm sorry, Bill 24-23? Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition to any item on Bill 2423? I'm sorry. Rebecca, do you want to speak in favor or against?
Hello, I'd like to speak in favor.
I'm sorry? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Go. My address is 921 Pottage Grove, South Bend, Indiana. I wanted to speak in favor of Section G and H of this bill, which is opioid unrestricted funds, that my understanding would go towards the establishment of the Crisis Response Center or Crisis Behavioral Center in St. Joseph County. As a citizen and just a regular person and a mom, I'd been working on this project for well over two years. I first presented the idea for this in the spring of 2021, and we originally had appropriations of ARP money of $2.6 million in December of 2021. Since then, the need has not gone away. In fact, my loved one called the police multiple times this weekend and was denied entry into Epworth twice before finally getting into a mental health facility on Sunday. So that involved police calls. The need remains, and while I'm very disappointed in the reduction of funding amounts that is being offered by the county at this time, I think it is absolutely necessary. I do want to note that in a different portion of tonight's meeting, you have $6.3 million of ARP funding set aside for paving projects. And according to the ARP funding website that the White House put up, they were really looking to use funding for human services made worse by the pandemic, things like healthcare and housing and employment. So I'm disappointed to see that we're using things on paving and streets, which I don't think were made worse by the pandemic. However, we are sufficiently, we will be happy with the $600,000 that you have set aside, because it seems that that's all we're going to get. I also want to say that in the last meeting, Mr. Shetzel had said that no further money will be considered. I think that that has changed recently, but that this has to be matched within one year, dollar for dollar by the state. And I think that there's every intention to try and get that money. However, nobody can predict the future, and Mr. Shetzel seems very impressed with his own self and his past as a hospital administrator. But as we know, the past is not the present. And so we have to look at the current landscape and see that it is possible, but it is not absolutely promised that there will be dollar for dollar match. I would like for you to absolutely support this, but I would ask for compassion on that match requirement, because it seems unreasonable and unnecessary.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Roy, I see your hand up. You have three minutes.
Yeah, just, I wanted to confirm what the lady just said, that the $600,000 is going towards the Crisis Response Center. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of any item? Seeing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to any item?
I have a question. Captain Connery, 51291, Hidden Hills Court. So if I understand right, the opioid unrestricted funding, the $600,000, is that for the Lincoln Way project? Or what is that money going to? The Crisis Center, which is... The Crisis Center, which is, all that money's going to Oklaun? So none of it-
Is that a matching state?
So, but it is all Oklaun? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. I'd entertain a motion on Bill number twenty-four dash twenty-three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend G and H of this appropriation such that is contingent on Oklaun obtaining a matching grant of six hundred thousand dollars with one, within one year of today's date. If this is not accomplished, the entire six hundred thousand will be returned to the county within sixty days of the one-year anniversary of this appropriation.
Thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
Was that, excuse me, Dan, did you say for a hundred or a hundred percent?
Yes, and I did-
I thought to you it said three quarters.
I did, but I, speaking with Lori Naftinger, we thought I presented that as an idea rather than some kind of contingent that would limit future councils, and she was much more agreeable to that. And if she would like to speak for herself, I would be glad to ever do that.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to amend the bill to put in a clause saying that items G and H must receive a hundred percent match within one year's time. Is there any counsel discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All in favor? Somebody, Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Shetzel.
Yes, sir.
You talked to Oklaun. Did she seem pretty confident she could get that match?
I would describe her as pretty confident. Again, if she would like to speak, if she's here and would like to speak for herself, that'd be great, but I would describe her as pretty confident.
I'd like to hear some comments from the lady, if she is available for comment.
She's not here. Lori Naftinger.
Lori.
Yeah, Lori Naftinger. If she's not here.
Is she still there?
How about Kelly?
I can share.
Or anyone from Oklaun?
I can just share the last couple of texts with you, if that'd be fine. Okay.
I think Joe asked for the-
Oh, Joe did. Yes, thank you. I said- Is she there?
I don't see her.
Okay. I said you get the six hundred thousand upfront, and you have a year to get the matching six hundred thousand. And she's, and she said, understood. We'll go with that. Thanks for clarifying.
Any further comment from the counsel on the amendment?
Well, I don't know. I guess when you, when you say she said, okay, fine, we'll go with that, that doesn't sound that confident. That sounds more like she's saying if that's, if that's what you're changing it to, and that's my only alternative, then I'm not going to turn it down. That's what it sounds like to me.
Okay. Well, I can just say that in speaking with her, it seemed she was relatively confident. Okay? But you can take my word for it, or?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not trying to dispute your word.
No, I know you're not.
I'm just saying my personal interpretation of that statement that you quoted from her. This has nothing to do with you. I'm saying my personal interpretation of what you just read to me as a quote from her. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, that's fine.
Any further counsel discussion on the amendment?
Well, I was expecting the seventy-five percent, and I had some issues with that, but I'm a little, so I'm a little concerned about the hundred percent. So I hope we're good because-
Any further comment? Clerk, will you please take the roll on the amendment?
Mr. Morton.
I don't agree with the amendment.
Dead, no?
No.
Okay. All right. Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess? No. Mr. Katanzerite?
No on the amendment.
No on the amendment? Okay. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
And President Root?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five. Looks like five to three in favor of the amendment.
Thank you. Let the record show the amendment was passed by a vote of five to three, and it now becomes part of the bill. May I have a motion on the bill?
I can make a motion.
Passage as amended.
A second.
Motion was made by Councilman Katanzerite to approve it. It was seconded by Councilman Shetzel. Is there any further discussion from the counsel on this bill?
Question, Mr. Root. This does include item P, correct?
That is correct. That was withdrawn at the request of that department.
It was withdrawn?
Not withdrawn. Ms. Drake, correct me if I'm wrong. Did they withdraw it or table it?
My understanding was they withdrew it.
That's what I thought, yeah, they withdrew it.
No, it was-
Sounds like somebody's going to help.
Yeah, this is Amy Rupe, the administrator with the Department of Health. It was not withdrawn. We need it to be appropriated as the funds have been requested to be returned to the donor.
It's been requested to be returned to the donor?
That is correct. The donor requested the unspent funds to be returned to them, and according to John Murphy, they would still need to be appropriated for them to be returned.
Just to be clear, Jamie, if I'm correct, item P is not part of this bill? It didn't come out of committee, I don't believe.
It did. Came out without recommendation.
Did it come out without recommendation? Okay.
Not originally, but it is now.
It came out without recommendation.
Okay. All the mosquito money, okay.
This is number P? Is that item P?
Yeah.
Okay.
...
And I wanted to cover ourselves by having an appropriation to refund it.
We do have an appropriation coming.
Right. That's why, that's why I recommended to Amy that she get an appropriation to, if she wanted to refund it.
This one, this-
This is different. Yeah.
Is that correct, Ms. Rupe? This is to send the money back to the donor?
That is correct.
Okay.
That, that changed since, Jamie makes a good point, that that wasn't originally what it was for, but that's what she wants it for now.
So do we need an amendment, then?
Yeah, you probably need an amendment, yeah.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Thomas?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
That we, uh-
To, um, withdraw?
No, to send this, to go ahead and, and send it back to the petitioner.
Yes.
Item-
I'll make a motion to, on letter P, to send back to the petitioner.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Passes, the amendment passes. If passed, this particular appropriation will be returned to the donor. Thank you. Any further comment or questions on this bill?
Mr. Root?
Yes.
I would just make a comment. I'm really disappointed that we couldn't get over the fact that that was an anonymous donation to help control things like West Nile virus and equine encephalitis in our county. It was a donation to help try and curtail that, and I'm disappointed that we're giving that money back to the donor simply because they wanted to remain anonymous, and that's just my statement on that.
Any further comment from the counsel?
Is that money being re-appropriated?
There, it is in the process, yes.
That's what I thought. I thought the money should be re-appropriated. So we'll have that money for the vector program.
We will have that money at the committee in April. It will be on the agenda, I'm sorry, at the end of March for a vote in April, yes.
Why are you shaking your head? No, Mark. So we're getting the money back?
Yeah.
There is an appropriation. It's not coming from this donor, but there is an appropriation that's been filed with the counsel to fund this program.
Okay.
Just a different funding source.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think any of us have seen an agenda yet for the committee meeting at the end of the month, but I think it was just filed yesterday, if I'm-
Yeah, recently. It was filed recently.
Yesterday, I believe, yeah. A new funding source. It's not the same funding source, but it's the same, go for the same purpose.
From the Health Department?
No.
No.
No?
No. Any further comments or questions on this bill? We did have a motion. It was made by, I believe, Mr. Katanzerite. It was seconded by Councilman Shetzel. One last time, any comments? Clerk, please take the roll on this bill.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number thirty-three dash twenty-three was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on, that concludes that section. The next section is the Emergency Rental Assistance Number Two Fund. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
Bill number thirty-two dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending ordinance one one-five dash two-two, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year 2023. Auditor.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
Bill thirty-two twenty-three comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
John Murphy County Auditor. The Emergency Rental Assistance Program is almost finished. We had three grants in total. All the money that's been spent out for rental assistance and utilities assistance has already been made. It was made in early January, the last payments. What this is, is just to clean up the budget. We have some money in here for the closing of the grants with federal grants. There's a, there's a number of closeout items that are required, so, and Focus is, is going to do that for us. So this will, once this money is all spent, the funding, the grant money will be all used up. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the counsel for the petitioner? Seeing none. We'll open to public hearing on Bill thirty-two dash twenty-three. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Hearing none. The public hearing is now over on Bill thirty-two twenty-three. May I have a motion on the bill?
Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Councilman Katanzerite. It was seconded by Councilman Shetzel. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel? Yes. Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number thirty-two dash twenty-three was passed by a vote of eight to zero. That concludes the Emergency Rental Assistance Fund. We will next move to the American Rescue Plan Fund. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
Okay. Bill number thirty-seven dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending ordinance one one-five dash two-two, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner Commissioner.
Thank you. Committee report, please, Mr. Shetzel.
Thirty, we're on thirty-two, thirty-three twenty-three?
Yeah.
Thirty-three twenty-three A comes with no recommendation. The rest of the bill comes with a favorable recommendation.
Petitioner?
This is the salary ordinance amending the Portage Manor bonuses that are included in the American Rescue Plan request.
You may not want to file this at this time. You may not want to approve this at this time.
Right.
Wait till sixty days, I would think.
Do we have a motion then on Bill thirty-seven twenty-three?
Motion to hold for sixty days. Second.
Any counsel discussion on the motion? Hearing none.
This is just to hold section A.
Just section A, right?
Just section A. Just section A. Just to hold the salary amendment, and then we'll need another amendment when we get to the next bill.
That's right.
Salary amendments always have two parts, the actual salary and then the appropriation. This is the salary to put it into the salary book. So we'll need another one on the next one. So we have a motion to hold this bill for sixty days. Any further counsel discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll on that vote?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
I did it. Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
President, President Root?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Let the record show that Bill number thirty-seven twenty-three was held for sixty days by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill number thirty-three dash twenty-three, an ordinance appropriating monies for the American Rescue Plan for the purposes herein specified for the apartment here enlisted, Saint Joseph County Government.
Thank you. All items in this bill were heard at our February twenty-eighth committee meeting, at which time the council held their discussions on these. So with that said, we are going to move to a public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any item in this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to any item in this bill? Hearing none. I am closing the public hearing. May I have a motion to amend Bill thirty-three dash-
President Root?
I'm sorry? Roy, oh, I didn't see your hand, Roy. Go ahead.
Yep, sorry. I just wanted to get a point of clarification on section A. So that's going to be tabled for sixty days, is that correct?
I believe there will be a motion made for that, yes.
Okay. The other part of that is Deb Lambert mentioned that they were not contracted for one point five million. So I just wanted to get clarification going forward, if that is the case, on what that one point five million dollars is going towards. Thank you.
Okay.
Steve said it was a placeholder. He heard it.
He didn't hear that.
Roy, did you hear that? Yeah.
Negative.
Sorry. The one point five million dollars is a placeholder for all potential contract services that might be incurred in the event of a shutdown of Portage Manor, including Byron Health and security and other things.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to amend Bill thirty-three dash twenty-three?
I make the motion to amend the bill.
In what way?
By putting section A on hold for sixty days.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there a second? We have a motion to amend the bill by holding Part A for 60 days. It was made by Councilman Shetzel. It was seconded by Councilman Morton. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Bill Number 33-23 is amended by removing Section A and holding it for 60 days. May I have a motion on the rest of Bill Number 33-23?
Motion to passage.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Catanzerite, seconded by Councilman Morton. Is there any further council discussion on any item on this part of the bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes eight, zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 33-23 minus Part A passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill Number 18-23, an ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council established the definition of school for use and reference by the St. Joseph Highway Department in connection with reduced speed zones/school zones. Petitioner, Mark Root.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, it's my honor on the... to call on you for the first time as Chairman Thomas for a committee report.
I believe you're catching me here flat-footed. Bill Number 18-23, I think approved.
Favorable.
What are you asking for me for?
Favorable.
I'm sorry, I'm facing out here with Jen.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Petitioner, Sky, I think you were going to handle this one for us.
Yeah, I was saying, where's Sky Medders at?
There he is.
There's Sky Medders.
I got it in my notes. I did think I was going to do it, but I'm sorry. Apologize for that. All right. What we have here, Sky Medders, Department of Infrastructure, Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th, 11th floor. We recent... You know, we were getting requests from schools and facilities that actually may have just had school in their name and not necessarily a school, and to put up speed zones and those types of things. And so Michael Meeks of our office looked to see if we had a definition of what a school was, and we did not have one specifically in the county, and I don't think the state necessarily had one either. So he worked with Counselor O'Brien, and they came up with what you have before you, which more or less designates a school as designation of additional or new school zones and the subsequent establishment of speed limits for school zones. The term "school" shall be defined as the following: A, an educational institution with physical facilities utilized by students and accredited by the Indiana Department of Education, or B, any accredited educational institution with facilities utilized by students that has been in existence and operation for a period greater than 13 months. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
You may have.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Mr. Catanzerite?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Hearing none then. We'll open it to public hearing on Bill Number 18-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Hearing none, public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion on Bill 18-23?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Morton. Is there any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes eight, zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 18-23 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Next up is land use and planning issues. I want to thank the Land Use Department for their patience these last couple months. You're like our midnight visitors. Now let's move on and have the clerk read Bill Number 19-23. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 19-23?
Bill 19-23, an ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County public way or public place. Petitioner, University of Notre Dame Duloc.
Thank you. May I have a committee report, please?
Mr. President, Bill Number 19-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Let's hear from Area Plan.
Yeah, thank you. This is Sean Kline, Area Plan, offices on the 11th floor of this building. So this is a petition to vacate the alley right-ofways on the west side of a Twickenham that you see there. They're in the middle of a couple soccer fields on Notre Dame's campus. We don't see any reason why these would ever be improved or provide access anywhere. So this is more or less just to clean things up, so to speak. So there are four grounds in which someone, a member of the public, can object to a vacation of a public way. Staff doesn't think that any of these will be in play here. We recommend that the alley rights way be vacated. Have you answered any questions?
Any questions from the council for Area Plan? Thank you. Petitioner?
Thank you. Mike Danch from Dan Charner and Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing University of Notre Dame. As Sean had mentioned, this is a cleanup procedure. When Twickenham Drive got relocated, what had happened is, is that there was an old subdivision plant. Those existing alleys are just what we call paper alleys. We need to vacate those to get rid of them. They're basically under the soccer fields for the university. Probably should have been done when Twickenham got dedicated to the public, but that was just an oversight. So what we're trying to do is clean that up and eliminate those alleys. They're not being used, obviously, by the public. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Danch. Any questions for the petitioner from the council? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion on Bill Number 19-23?
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Councilman Catanzerite. It was seconded by Councilman Fig. Is there any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes eight, zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 19-23 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill Number 20-23, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at north portion of 54516 State Road 933, from C Commercial District to U University District. Petitioner, University of Notre Dame Duloc.
Thank you. Committee report, Mr. Fig?
Mr. President, Bill Number 20-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area Plan?
This is Sean Kline once again. So this is a petition to rezone the area outlined on the screen there, from C Commercial to U University. It is owned by the University of Notre Dame. They would like to use this vacant lot for a solar energy system. To the north is a university campus, Zoned U University. To the south is WNDU Television Studio, followed by more of Notre Dame's campus. The campus of Notre Dame is also on the east, and then on the west is the Holy Cross Village Senior Living, Zoned R2. And this is what the property currently looks like. This is the existing fence along 933. There was a revised site plan submitted. It still shows 46,000 square feet of solar panels, as well as the six-foot fence around 933. They're all meeting the 25-foot front setback. But also, the petitioner has added 110 arborvitae shrubs, just to provide some screening from the right-ofway on 933, as this was a... The visibility of the panels from the right-ofway was a concern that they wanted to address. Staff recommends that the rezoning be granted on the condition that these arborvitae are provided on-site. Turning to the five criteria in state law related to granting rezonings, staff finds that it does meet each of these criteria. It's reasonable to allow a property that is owned by the university and surrounded by other university uses to be zoned to U University and provide the full array of university uses, of which solar energy system is one permitted use. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for Area Plan? Hearing none. Mr. Danch?
Yep.
Thank you. Mike Danch from Dan Charner and Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing the university. As Sean had mentioned, what this is, is the solar farm that is on the east side of 933, just north of the WNDU Studios. And prior discussions with council when we had the land use committee meeting, what we have done on the site plan due to a concern about the... Basically, the view of the streetscape along that east side of 933. We moved the security fence back and then added arborvitae shrubs. What those will do is those will get to the height of the fence that Sean was talking about, which would be six foot tall. So there would be screening between 933 and the solar farm area. This particular solar farm will probably add maybe about 1% of the solar needs for the university, but this is their basically goal to get to these types of systems for the new technology that's there. This farm will have approximately 3,400 solar panels, and it's basically just on the east side. It's not on a used part of the campus where they had done future planning for any types of new buildings or structures. So this is a direct area that can be used for the solar farm. And also just because it is from the sunlight area, this particular location works perfect for that, based on the consultants' reports that they had from the university. If you had any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Danch. Any questions for the petitioner from the council? Mr. Root? Yes, Mr. Catanzerite?
Just to stand corrected, that was Mr. Root's request on the screening.
Yes.
It wasn't the university coming back to us because they wanted to.
Well, no, because we had those questions about the beautification of 933 there. And the good thing here was, is that we did have the room to add that landscaping. And by keeping it just to the height of the fence, the maximum of six foot, that doesn't impact the electricity that can be generated from those solar panels.
Will the... Will there be pollinators planted along those panels?
Yes, there actually is. It's very detailed in the ordinance for anything for these solar energy systems. There does have to be pollination plants along the... Basically, the bottom of all the rows of the solar panels that you see there. So that has to be part of the plan that gets submitted for the final site plan.
I asked Mr. Sexton and you at our committee meeting about the sidewalk there, because it's so dangerously close to 933. I know it's a state sidewalk. Are you taking those... Are those panels going to be put up as far west as they can go, or is there any consideration keeping them off in case we end up doing something different with the streetscape?
It is. The... What we did was, we were trying to plan ahead for anything that may happen on the east side of 933. So as Sean had mentioned, there's a 25-foot setback for where those solar panels are. There's also a municipal water line that runs along that portion of the site. So that was the other reason there's a setback for those solar panels. What this would also do is between where we move the fence to and where the landscaping is, if someone wanted to do some improvements, whether it's something between Notre Dame or the state where they wanted to put a trail system or get rid of that sidewalk that's basically right on the street, it would be able to be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. One quick question. So that's 1% of the university's power, right? I'm just curious, how much of the university's power comes from solar? After this is done, how much of the university's power will come from solar?
Right now, just this 1%.
Just that 1%.
They're slowly working into that. They also have the hydro dam that's in downtown South Bend where they're completing that.
Okay.
These are just all the new technologies that they're trying to do to basically get rid of any kind of coal-fired things. And they also had changed over their utility plant to gas, if you remember that. NIPSCO ran a very large gas line to the university to take care of their furnaces, too.
Is there a long-term goal on solar?
Yes, there is. So they would be taking a look at that just to see. As we had mentioned earlier, there's that solar farm that's out on Bittersweet Road where the university also gets power from that.
Any further comments? Mrs. Drake?
Do you have any other ideas? Would you expand, I mean, like this size, solar farms in other areas around Notre Dame?
Well, they would take a look at that. If you're familiar, obviously, with the campus, there are some of those larger areas that they're kind of using for parking areas. Their consultants could take a look at that to see if this... If this works for them, whether there's some additional areas on campus that they could do that. It doesn't mean that they might not have other properties in the county that they could also possibly do a solar farm on and get the... Basically, recoup the energy monies from that when you do it on some other site.
Any further comments? Mr. Danch, I'd like to thank you and the university for taking my consideration under request and putting in the land safe screening along 933.
You're welcome, yeah.
I think that will just help the...
That's going to look a lot better.
Yeah, look a lot better. So thank you.
You're welcome.
With that said, any further comments? Okay, let's go to public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Hearing now. The public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion on Bill 20-23?
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Fig. Is there any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes eight, zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 20-23 was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, will you read our next bill, please?
Bill Number 21-23, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 16700 Cleveland Road, from our single-family district to O Office District. Petitioner, The Rynx Group LLC.
Thank you. May I have a committee report, Mr. Fig?
Mr. President, Bill Number 21-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area Plan?
Good evening. May Kratzar, Area Plan Commission. As stated, this petition is for a zone map change from residential, single-family district to O Office District. This property here is outlined in blue. As you can see, to the north, west, and south, it is joined by residential properties. To the east, there is an office buffer. It's on the north side of Cleveland Road in three parcels. West of State Route 23, close to the jurisdiction of the city of Mishawaka. Here's a picture of the site. As you can see, the structure is residential in character, even though it's going to be used for office use for the purpose of a salon. Looking east down Cleveland, you can see the commercial uses. Looking the other direction, you can see the residential, across the street to the north, residential. The site plan, meeting Office District standards. Staff does feel it meets all the criteria, all the findings of fact to approve this petition. The Area Plan Commission also recommended approval, and the committee, as you stated, also recommended approval. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And I think... I don't know if Noah is online or not, but that would be the petitioner. He was online last time.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for Area Plan? Hearing none. Petitioner? Is the petitioner out there?
I don't see him, so maybe not.
Last call for the petitioner. If not, do I have a motion on this bill? Jamie, you want to explain the options, because we have some new members? Yep, thank you. Do I have a motion? Mr. Thomas, you have a question?
We did this in committee.
Yes, we passed out a committee.
And it came approv... It came favorable to us and council. I think we should move to approve. Vote on it.
I hate to give that precedent, because I don't want to encourage petitioners that they don't have to show up.
Gotcha.
Traditionally, historically, this council has, when a petitioner has not shown up, the normal precedent has been to table it until the next meeting. And I don't want to give a precedent that you don't have to show up as the petitioner to represent your bill. That said, do I have a motion?
Motion to table.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to table by Mr. Fig. It was seconded by Mr. Morton. Any further comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Nay. The ayes have it. This bill is tabled until the next meeting, public meeting. Thank you. That is all of our land use for tonight. Do we have any unfinished business? Do we have any new business? Do we have any privilege of the floor limited to three minutes to any item not on the agenda? Please state your name and address. For the record, you have three minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name's Sally Dixon, and I live at 50801 Granger, Indiana. I'm a registered nurse, and I coordinate the fetal infant mortality review and maternal infant health initiatives at the St. Joseph County Department of Health. I'm speaking tonight in response to the five-to-four council vote on February 14th to deny the reappropriation of the roughly $7,800 in sponsorship funding from the Achieving Birth Equity Conference we hosted last April. That was supported by 29 local, state, and national organizations. It was attended by nearly 200 people who support our goal to ensure the conditions of optimal birth outcomes for all people with a willingness to address racial and social inequities in a sustained effort. This is important because in our county, our overall infant mortality rate is stubbornly high, and for black infants, the rate is three times higher than for white infants. Our birth equity work group, volunteers who are nurses, doctors, researchers, public Our birth equity work group, volunteers who are nurses, doctors, researchers, public health professionals, dualists, community health workers, and community members spent a whole year planning the conference and have been using the proceeds to hold events called Health Cafes to engage mothers across our community in conversations about pregnancy and childbirth and parenting and to understand their experiences and barriers to care. So it was stunning to watch five of you vote no to renew those funds that were approved last spring. And since then, a number of reasons have been given for this decision. First, it was an objection to the keynote speaker. Then I was told that people are uncomfortable with the Health Cafes, and I have to wonder why anyone would be against us listening to mothers to get their input into improving the experience of pregnancy and childbirth in our community, a community with high rates of pregnancy complications. And finally, last week, Mrs. Drake said that she would only be comfortable if the money was taken away from the Department of Health and be given to another agency. And that's when I realized that not approving this money means you must not trust or respect the work of the Fetal Infant Mortality Review Team, maternal-child health professionals who study infant and fetal mortality for the purpose of making recommendations to develop and innovate local actions that improve systems of care, policies, services, and resources for women, infants, and families. Taking away the money means you'd also not trust or respect the organizations who collaborate with us and invest in our work, including our health systems, health plans, universities, and community agencies. And worst of all, taking away these funds means you dismiss all that we have learned from studying 250 family stories of infant loss and stillbirth in St. Joseph County over the last seven years. So I'm requesting that the council, Human Services Committee, return this funding to their agenda as soon as possible, when I figure out the right way to do that, so that the full county council can correct this mistake and reappropriate the funds so we can get back to including mothers' voices and opinions in our efforts to ensure that every family in St. Joseph County has the opportunity to have a healthy pregnancy, delivery, and first year of their baby's life. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Drake? Yes, you can.
I'd like to make a few comments. We were not happy about working with the National Birth Equity Collaborative. Their founder was operating without a license when she was working as an OB. She was sued in malpractice cases for botched procedures that led to the death of a mother and a baby. She also pushes abortion on her NBC site, which is contrary to the work of what Sally is supposed to be doing in her role. The Safety Pin Grant is there to help babies survive in utero and after. I wrote a letter addressing some of these concerns to the Board of Health I'd like to read. Dear Board of Health, in case the issue of maternity-infant money the council rejected is discussed at your upcoming meeting, I wanted to let you know that I worked with Women's Care Center to come up with an alternative program we could use instead of the plan Sally Dixon offered us. As you know, the majority of the council members are not comfortable with the café idea. It's original ties to Dr. Krieger Perry and the NBC. For reference, this is how Ms. Dixon was quoted on the TV news. Everyone is entitled to their opinion, but the money in question, like we talked about, already was donated by local organizations for the purpose of achieving birth equity in our community, Dixon said. Dixon added that infant mortality rate in our area is two to three times higher for black infants than for white infants. She says the council's action will only make it more challenging to close that gap. Since Dixon said the council's action would make it harder to help black women and their babies, I decided to work with the Women's Care Center to come up with a plan that would help serve this demographic, as well as help all moms in the county. The plan WCC developed would provide more preterm care for mothers in our community. As the WCC works with the majority of black moms in our community who have babies, for instance, they worked with 966 of the 1,189 black mothers that delivered in St. Joe County in 2020. I thought this was a win-win that the Health Department couldn't refuse. However, even though I've offered the Health Department an alternative, the department is still not satisfied. The department does not think that the program would be in line with what the sponsors envisioned, despite the fact that the program the WCC would employ would help black babies and their mothers a key goal. The Women's Care Center is the premier service agency in our area that serves mothers, preterm babies, and infants. They have the market share in the area, serving one of every two babies in St. Joe County. There could be no better partnership for the Health Department to help babies in our community. In fact, the Health Department already works with the WCC on other initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Am I allowed to just say one thing?
Ma'am, no, you've had your three minutes, ma'am. Thank you.
Fine. Someone else will.
That's fine. Next, please.
My name is Barbara Young. I live at 32334 White Maple Court in South Bend. And my issue tonight is about this very thing that we're talking about. It's a matter, really, of infant mortality. I, I had a child die that was full-term, and I know the trauma and awfulness of what happens. And I had the best of care. And so this program by the Health Department was really to just address this problem. And because someone doesn't agree with someone who spoke, but the, you know, the conference is over. It was two days. There were 175 people. They were enthusiastic. They wanted more. We know that the mortality rate for black children is three times as high. So this was a, the Health Department's desire to go into the community and follow up on this conference. And rather than to let them do that, the, almost $8,000 was taken away, and they couldn't proceed with their work within the community. This seems to me, if I were a sponsor who donated, and there were, they did actually put together $50,000 for this, this conference and the follow-up, if I were a sponsor, I would question why this council could take money away that I gave for a specific purpose and do, and put it somewhere else. So I think it's a matter of justice, and I think it's a matter of equity. And I think it's really admirable that our Health Department wanted to address this problem, which is national, it is our county, it is state, it's big, and it's urgent. So I'm encouraging you to give them their money back and let them do their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Olivia Schneider. I live at 54428 Terrace Lane in South Bend. I also came here tonight in support of the Department of Health's maternal infant health initiatives and specifically the funding for the Sharing Pregnancy and Birth Story Cafes, which was denied by the council. I want to also share some statistics about maternal and infant health, which demonstrates why these birth cafes are so important. So as others have said, in St. Joseph County, data shows that black babies die in their first year of life, a rate two to three times higher than white babies. A similar pattern exists for maternal health across the country. Compared to white mothers, black mothers are 27% more likely to experience pregnancy complications, and they're three times more likely to die from those complications. Data shows that even when you control for the mother's income or education, these differences persist. So it's not just a factor of socioeconomic status, it's because of racism and because of systemic factors that are creating these racial disparities in birth outcomes. There's a lot of great organizations and dedicated professionals in our community that have been working to address maternal and infant health, including Women's Care Center, including a lot of great organizations that do great work. But even though for decades and decades, we've had organizations working on this, we still keep seeing this problem. The whole idea of the birth cafes is to provide a space for marginalized women to share the challenges that have impacted the health of their pregnancy. This is a well-established strategy in public health and community development and academic research. When you're trying to address a complex systemic issue, you need to talk to the people who are impacted, not just assume that you know the solution. Mrs. Drake is just assuming she knows the solution. Many of you council members are assuming that you know the solutions that'll work for them. Instead of listening to the women who are actually experiencing higher rates of complication, the women whose babies are at higher risk of dying in our community, you've imposed your own solution to give the money to the Women's Care Center without even listening to them. Now, I want to be perfectly clear, my issue isn't with Women's Care Center. They do a lot of good to help women in our community. I totally and completely agree with that. What I have a problem with is the way in which Mrs. Drake proposed this so-called solution. What we're seeing is an elected official trying to take away money that is specifically donated to the Health Department, and she's trying to funnel it to one specific nonprofit where she has personal connections to. That's not the proper channel for appropriating government funds. It's a case of government overreach motivated by ideological concerns. So let me bring this back to the core issue. Babies in our community are dying. Let's do something new. Let's hear their voices. Let's empower these women, and let's support our Health Department that's doing this great work. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Robin Vida, Director of Health Outreach Promotion Education, St. Joseph County Department of Health, offices here on the eighth and ninth floor of this county-city building. I have been at the Department of Health for almost 16 years. And all due respect, I would never act in a way to act as if I was a council member. So I do take some offense when we have individuals that like to think they know public health and/or my role here. The work we are doing is leading this state. We are leaders in this country, not just for fetal infant mortality, for lots of things. We have worked with Women's Care Center, doing some of the work that Ms. Drake and Women's Care Center had presented through a community health worker grant that was offered $275,000 to connect women to earlier trimester prenatal care, insurance, and other resources. And we respect Women's Care Center. We appreciate their relationship, hence why we went to them. But also, they serve about half of our mothers. There are still others that we need to hear from and we need to see. Also, forgive me, because I'm quite tired, a mom also of small children. I'm going to stop there. I'm going to take the high road. Thank you.
Can I ask Robin a quick question?
What?
Can I ask her a quick question? Very quick. Prefer I don't?
Yeah.
It's just a statistic. I just want to understand it's a statistic.
Go ahead.
Okay. So you said, one of the two of you said infant mortality rate for black babies is two to three times higher than whites. When you say two, two, three, does that just mean it's somewhere between two and three, but we're not quite sure exactly what it is?
It's almost three.
It's almost.
It's almost three, yes.
Clarification.
Yeah. It ebbs and flows, unfortunately.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I would like to offer a reading in support and encouragement...
Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. Deborah Durell, 21677 Autton Road, South Bend. So to repeat, I'm offering this reading in encouragement and support of dialogue, open and continuing. We are living in a time of exposure, where the light of truth is shining into all the dark corners of our lives. As a result, all that has been lurking in the shadows is now coming into sharp focus. Some of the things that this light is revealing are deeply disturbing, and some are downright terrifying. This is causing many people to feel lost and hopeless or completely overwhelmed by the amount of work that we are facing. Many recognize that this time represents a critical crossroads for humanity, a teetering point of choice that will determine the future of all life. Yet we seem to have become frozen by fear, unable to determine which path to follow. The good news is that we don't have to make this choice blindly. We have been given all the guidance that is necessary to choose the right path. We all come into this world with a set of instructions. These instructions guide us toward our highest purpose. They lead us to the essential truths that live deep within us. As we move through these challenging times, it is important to remember that none of us are here by accident. We entered this world with the express purpose of facilitating the changes that are manifesting during this time, and we brought with us the gifts needed to accomplish that task. None of us are out of time or out of place, though many of us remain out of step with our true path. Our unique imprint is essential to the larger pattern that is unfolding. To make that imprint, we must access our individual gifts and manifest them in the world collectively. This is how we will heal the wounds of our shared history and form a more humane pathway forward. As we seek this healing, let us do so with the knowledge that oneness is not sameness. It is the transcendence of our differences and the weaving of our diverse expressions into a tapestry that is harmonized and aligned with common purpose. I believe we have the capacity to create a world that is compassionately intent on preserving the integrity of all life in a harmonious balance. This was from Sacred Instructions by Sheri Mitchell, and I hope that it resonates with you like it did with me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in person who would like to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Seeing no one in person, is there anyone online who would like to speak for privilege of the floor? Seeing no one, privilege of the floor is over. I would entertain, is there somebody?
Yeah, Roy's...
Oh, I'm not seeing that corner up here. Okay, Roy, go ahead.
Can't hear you. Okay, sorry, I wasn't allowed to unmute myself. Roy signs, 426 South Mead Street. First off, I'd like to thank the commissioners and the council for exercising prudence today to allocate 60 days for proposals.
Hey, Roy, I should probably remind you, privilege of the floor is limited to anything not on tonight's agenda, so, but thank you.
I would like to speak to the, does that include the amendment to the...
Yes, and anything that was dealt with tonight.
Then for any contracts moving forward or proposals presented to the council, I hope that they would allow an opportunity for, in a non-traditional RFP situation, to submit the questions that they might have for any petitioners for contracts ahead of time to include things that they may be concerned with, whether it be financials or skill sets, so that any petitioner presenting in a non-traditional RFP format might have that information so that we set them up for success. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online?
Like Tita Whitmer had his hand up.
Yeah, this is Steven Whitmer, 56745 Eastview Drive, Oceola, Indiana. I support the council's direction to stop funding the equity direction of our Board of Health and pursue funding through the Women's Care Center. I think that would be a wiser expenditure of health board money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online? Hearing none, privilege of the floor is over. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do I have a second? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.